Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, June 12th, 2023. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's Cable Information Channel 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougal, the Mayor of Lexington. This time, I'd like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Corns.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right, Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kathy Manis and Councilmember Gavin Smith are not present this evening. This time, I'd like to ask invocation for tonight's meeting, Councilmember Todd Corns.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Father, I was just reading your word says that we should pray for the prosperity of the city in which you have put us, because if it prospers, we too shall prosper. And we are really grateful, because we sit in a place that is full of prosperity, it's full of peace, it's full of kindness and goodness and community. And so, we just pause to say thank you for that. We pray that this prosperity would continue, we would all prosper, and that we would not only prosper for ourselves and our families, but we would do so for the good of our community, our state, our nation, our country, our world. We desperately need not only prosperity, but we need goodness and kindness and love. And all those are sourced in you. So, we pray you would give us those things in bounty, and we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. This time, I'd like to introduce and to call to the podium, this is U.S. Army Retired Sergeant First Class Rich Little. If Rich would please come forward. Rich, thank you for being with us again, sir. We're glad to have you.
Well, thank you for having me, as I'm always proud to service, I was for so many years in the military. But, you know, you all have heard me any number of times, and I've decided I'd put a little bit of a different spin on it tonight, if you want me to introduce myself to the group as you have in the past.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, as you've said, Mr. Mayor, I am Rich Little, SFC retired from the United States Army Security Agency after 22 years of service. Now, our business was vigilance, that's what we were all about, listening in on the other guy. It was our job to listen in, dig out military intelligence from whoever the bad guy at the time was, and pass it on to our commanders for strategic usage, for combat usage, and so on and so forth. So, during those 22 years, I traveled to, well, three foreign countries. There was Germany, there was Turkey, there was California. But, that's another story.
Sure.
And, you know, ASA, as we were called, like so many parts of the Army, had a motto. In fact, they had a number of mottos. Anywhere you go in the Army, the Air Force, the Navy, there are mottos floating around. One of ours was ASA All the Way, Always Vigilant for the USA. And we tried very hard to do that. The fact is that around the world, our enemies, our potential enemies, are awake or sleeping somewhere. As a consequence, we are awake or sleeping, depending where in the world we are, in terms of who we are against at any given time, or who's against us. Unlike the rest of the Army, which in combat, well, they're doing whatever they do, but in peacetime, as is more or less the case right now, they have mostly a training mission. They go to bed when everybody else goes to bed, and so on and so forth, they're awake when everybody else is awake. The ASA, because of the nature of their business, is around the clock, 24 hours a day, we are serving, we are working to intercept the information that our government needs, hopefully to do the job that they need to do for us, okay? And other than all of that, I'm, I'll get away from the military for the moment, and tell you all, I was born in Brooklyn, New York, which many of you know is called the, the, yes. I'm, excuse me if I lose words.
It's fine.
I turned 80 10 days ago.
Yeah, congratulations, happy birthday.
Every once in a while, I lose words, and I kind of have to grasp out there, find a way around what I was trying to say. That's life.
That's life.
Hopefully, none of you out there will ever get to that point. Anyway, you all know that it's called the melting pot of the world. 800 languages are spoken throughout New York City, 800 languages, okay? And I am one of the examples of that melting pot, in that my mother came from a Polish, Russian, German background, first generation in America. My father came from a Scotch-Irish-English background, 13th generation in America. And it's kind of interesting that all the Polacks and the Germans and everyone else, I'm primarily a Polack, so that's why you guys, they hated each other. And on the other side, the Brits, the English, and the Scots were the same way, and here I am, all right here in front of you. But I've probably said enough for now.
It's fine.
And I appreciate this, and I hope, I'll be happy to come back anytime you want to put up with me.
Mr. Little, thank you very much for being with us, and thank you for listening that allowed us to be sitting here today. So, we appreciate you very much. Hold on, hold on, Mr. Little. Hey, Rich. Rich, come back. We hadn't said to pledge yet. Come on back, lead us in the pledge. If everyone, please stand and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I go now?
Yes, sir. We'll see you soon, buddy. Thank you. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Are there any deletions on tonight's agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to remove from the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, we'll move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Ron Williams. This is a proclamation of the Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. A proclamation of the Council for the Town of Lexington, recognizing June 4th, 2023 as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is an inherited neurological disorder that is characterized by involuntary physical and vocal tics that occur many times a day, and whereas Tourette Syndrome is often accompanied by other mental health disorders such as attention deficit, obsessive-compulsive disorder, learning disabilities, and anxiety. And whereas Tourette Syndrome and persistent tic disorders affect 1 in 50 children, more than 10,824 schoolchildren in the state of South Carolina alone are dealing with Tourette Syndrome, and although some of those cases are aided by medication, there's no standard treatment or known cure for the disorder. And whereas positive actions to assist children and families living with Tourette Syndrome would result from a broadening of public and professional knowledge and acceptance of Tourette Syndrome, and whereas the Tourette Syndrome Association of America is actively providing services to families, educating medical professionals and teachers, and supporting research to better understand the science and treatment of TS. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council of the Town of Lexington that June 4th, 2023 is hereby declared to be Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day, and that all citizens are urged to raise awareness and understanding of Tourette Syndrome, and to promote support for individuals and families who are affected by this order, dated this 12th day of June 2023. Steve McDougal, Mayor.
Very good. Anyone here wishing to represent, please come forward. We'd love to hear from you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. As it mentioned, I'm with the Tourette Association. I run the Greater Carolinas Tourette Group. We support families in both North and South Carolina. I have my youth ambassador here. She was trained in DC on a wonderful program we offer, and to educate peers in schools about Tourette Syndrome and normalize it, make it more of a household word, because it's very misunderstood. As it mentioned, 1 in 50 school-aged children are diagnosed with Tourette Syndrome or a persistent tic disorder. The CDC recently released the new sets of stats, and it's over 20,000 South Carolina children have been diagnosed, and the misdiagnosis rate is 50%. So, there's a great need, and I appreciate the support of Lexington, as well as Governor McMaster. He has proclaimed Tourette Awareness Day as well. It means so much to us, because it helps us create awareness and get the resources out, so people don't have to suffer in silence.
Very good. If you'll stand right there, we're going to bring down the proclamation, get some pictures we'd like to post also.
Thank you. And I apologize, Representative Calhoun was going to be here, as well as several other members from Lexington Women's Club, but apparently it's Vacation Bible School Week, and there's a bad record on that one.
Oh, no. Well, you have a few ladies here.
Oh, yay!
Yeah.
Thank you. Hey, Sarah, how are you doing?
I didn't wear my shirt.
Oh, come on, get in the picture.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, ladies, for being with us. For our next presentation this evening, this will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is a proclamation congratulating the state champion ship River Bluff High School baseball team. If one of you guys want to come forward, y'all standing around the microphone, we want to read this proclamation to you. Come on, guys, y'all come on up.
A proclamation of the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington, commending the River Bluff High School baseball team for winning the South Carolina State 5A Championship. Whereas the 2023 River Bluff High School baseball team compiled a record of 28 wins and seven losses, including a championship run in the Forest Acres Classic. And whereas, following the regular season, the Gators captured the lower state championship by beating Somerville. Whereas, they went on to defeat Blythewood two games to none, also called a sweep, including a 9-7 win in Game Two to capture the 2023 5A baseball championship. Whereas, the team members include Matthew Garrus, Stephen Collier, Andrew Vaughn, Wyatt McPherson, Walker Mitchell, Preston Sutton, Hodges MacArthur, Colby Reynolds, Thomas Powell, Weston Grant, Cameron Woodruff, Walker Godwin, Coleman Suzie, Logan Busby, Bay Hollins, Garrett Sanders, Connor McIntyre, Wyatt Meldrum, Matt Lawrence, Alex Robbins, Miles Prophet, Manning Burgess, Hayden Barker, Landon Gross, Braden Sox, Jack Rivers, Zach Ortiz, and Dalton Corley, as well as Coaches Mark Bonnet, Paul Free, Tommy Michu, one of my coaches way back in the day, and Lucas Hammers, Hummers, excuse me. Whereas, the Mayor and Council, as well as the citizens of the Town of Lexington, are always proud, and yes, we are, of the academic and athletic achievements of their local students. I know Ms. Manis would love to be here to chime in. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council of the Town of Lexington that the River Bluff High School baseball team is hereby recognized and commended for its accomplishments in winning the 2023 South Carolina 5A baseball championship, dated this 12th day of June 2023. Steve McDougal, Mayor.
Mark, the microphone is yours. Congratulations, buddy.
We appreciate this, guys, a recognition. We're proud of this awesome community we live in, represent our school. Obviously, we have a lot more guys on the team. It's tough. You know, school got out last week. We got a lot of kids on vacation trips. Tonight's a big Legion baseball night, too, so we were able to get some of our guys, I got Thomas Powell, I got, I did it at camp this morning, too, Connor McIntyre, Alex Robbins, and Braden Sox. These four guys represent our guys, they were able to make it here, just great young men. We're proud, we're proud. Thank you, guys, very much.
Super proud. Very good, guys. So, all right, you're the four that showed up. Anybody want to say anything? Y'all want to get up in the microphone, let's hear from you? We want to hear about the experience of winning that championship, because that was pretty exciting.
I'll give you a little bit before I give him the mic, okay?
Yes, sir.
The guys I got with me, this is Thomas Powell, Thomas is a senior, the other three guys are rising seniors. Thomas is going to play at University of South Carolina.
Awesome. Go Game Cops.
So, Thomas, Thomas finished the year hitting .350 with 11 home runs.
Wow.
Also with 7-2 on the mound, and the funny thing about that is, going into the year, Thomas had thrown a total of three innings. So, we weren't sure how much he pitched. I don't think he thought how much he'd pitch. And we actually suffered a few injuries on the mound, and he kind of got forced into action, and he stepped up. So, he had a great year for us, so we're going to give you a chance to speak, all right?
A pitcher, a pitcher that hits bombs?
Pitcher and outfielder, there you go. So, I don't know if he knows this, but we had a side bet going on, but I wasn't going to pitch more than five innings, so I'm out 50 bucks. But, you want to know about the experience? I said this in one of the interviews after the game, was just the guys that you play for, and these three are probably some of the closest guys I got close with at the end. And it really is true that you play for the guys beside you, and when you love somebody as much as we loved each other, it really shows, especially in that last game, when things didn't exactly go the way we wanted to the whole time.
Yeah. Way to grind, buddy. Good job, man. Congratulations to you. Congratulations. Good job, Mayor. Appreciate you, appreciate you coming in. Congratulations.
Coach, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will have a vision plan update. Vision plan for June 12th, 2023. The Virginia Hilton Park renovation and expansion is moving forward. Construction crews are currently working on the retaining walls for the playground. The steel structure for the performance pavilion has gone up, and I talked to Dan Walker earlier, we talked about the ponds are getting rocked. So, that thing is moving along very rapidly, and we're glad to see that. For updates on the Town's vision plan, please visit lexsc.com. This time, we'll have a traffic update from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will be a lane closure on North Church Street tomorrow between 9:00 AM and noon to repair the roadway from a recent water main break. Dominion Gas continues with lane closures on Highway 378 west of town. A new driveway is being installed at 811 South Lake Drive, requiring period, period lane shifts over the next week. And the next traffic committee meeting is scheduled for August 30th, 2023, at 8:00 AM. If you have any problems to report for traffic issues, please call 803-358-7273.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protam. This time, we'll move right into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The following public hearings were deferred following a posted 15-day notice for the June 12th, 2023 council meeting. That is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map 34000201 and 009 and 077004, 007006, and 002, located along Beekeeper Court and North Lake Drive. Also deferred was final reading of an ordinance approving a planned unit development for Smallwood Cove. Also, item number three was deferred, final reading of an ordinance approving a development agreement for Smallwood Cove. Also deferred was annexation at 2408 Mineral Springs Road, 2418 Mineral Springs Road, and 2422 Mineral Springs Road. All six items were deferred.
Mr. Mayor, can we get staff to explain why they were deferred?
Absolutely.
Mayor, members of council, they were deferred because the item was withdrawn from the Planning Commission to make modifications, and it would be brought back at a future date. So, it seemed not the best idea to go ahead and have them when we don't have a project.
Right.
Is that for four, five, and six, I'll say?
The Mineral Springs ones, I do not know the answer to that.
Mr. Hanson's coming forward.
Mr. Hanson would know.
The three on Mineral Springs was requested to be deferred by the developer, because they're still working out some details on the project.
Very good. Is that going to be deferred to July?
At this time, that is our, we presume those will be on the July agenda, yes.
Okay.
And the one, two, and three, do we have a time limit on when they're deferred to?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. At this time, we'll open up. Public hearings are first item on tonight's agenda for public hearing. It's final reading of an ordinance for the 2023-2024 budget. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance for the 2023-2004 tax levy. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Final reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County tax map 5497-01-012, that's 460 South Lake Drive. This is a portion of the Old Mill Pond. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Item number four, final reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County tax map, number 3401034, located at 1524 North Lake Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Corns. This is final reading of an ordinance for the 2023-2024 budget. Councilmember Corns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. South Carolina law requires Town Council to adopt a balanced budget each year. Budget revenue and expenditures are attached, as well as the draft ordinance. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Corns makes a motion. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lyle.
Thanks. Mr. Poole.
Yes, sir.
Is it an accurate statement that this budget does not have any money allocated in it for the Smallwood Cove, or anything around it?
That is an accurate statement.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any allocations.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Mayor Protam? No? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is final reading of an ordinance for the 2023-2024 tax levy. Councilmember Williams.
South Carolina law requires Town Council to adopt the tax levy each year, attached as the draft ordinance for the tax levy for fiscal year 2324. I make a motion for final reading approval for the tax levy fiscal year 2024.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corns seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County tax map 340001034, located at 1524 North Lake Drive. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. C. C. Goodwin Limited Partnership owns approximately 1.4 acres located at 1524 North Lake Drive, and has petitions to annex the property into the town. A dollar general store is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial and protected residential, too. North Lake Drive is classified as an arterial road. Planning Commission has already reviewed this during their May meeting, and they've recommended to us general commercial zoning for the property and arterial road classification for North Lake Drive. Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion for first reading approval of the annexation.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Very good. Did you follow that? Madam Clerk, very good. Our next item of old business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County tax map 5497-01-012, located at 460 South Lake Drive. This is a portion of Old Mill Pond. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Old Mill LLC owns approximately 39.4 acres, which includes the Old Mill Pond. During the Old Mill Trail development process, it was discovered that a portion of the pond has never been annexed until its town limits. Old Mill LLC has petitioned to annex the property to alleviate any jurisdictional concerns that could arise once the trail is open. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their May meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the property. I make a motion for final reading of approval.
Mayor Protam makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corns seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Corns. This is first reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with Charleston County Sheriff's Office. Councilmember Corns.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The Charleston County Sheriff's Office has requested a mutual aid agreement with the Lexington Police Department. I make a motion for first reading approval of an ordinance entering into mutual aid agreement with the Charleston County Sheriff's Office.
Councilmember Corns makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map 4300-08-007, located at 1201 West Main Street. Councilmember Williams.
Satcher Investment Properties owns 21.77 acres located at 1201 West Main Street, and has petitioned to annex the property. Jim Hudson Ford dealership is located on the property. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, protected residential, and limited commercial. West Main Street is classified as an arterial road. Gibson Road and Henderson Streets are classified as collector roads, and Cherry Street is classified as a limited local road. Planning Commission will review this annexation during their next meeting to recommend a zoning and road classification for these parcels. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Very good. Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Yes, Mayor Protam.
We have discussed that from now on, no more annexations like this come to us before they go to the Planning Commission. I'm assuming this one was already in the pipe before that discussion happened, so I'm going to vote for this one tonight, but I won't vote for any more that comes before it goes to the Planning Commission.
Very good. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. This is the accommodations tax. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 27th, 2023, the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee reviewed the 2023 accommodations tax projects requesting funds from the 65% A-Tax Fund allocation. Nine applicants submitted requests that totaled $218,000. A spreadsheet listing their requests and the Accommodation Tax Committee's award recommendations is attached for your review and approval. Award amounts this year equal available funds of $169,500. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for council approval as the same.
Very good. Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston. This is appointment of interim Town Administrator. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During Town Council's June 6 special work session, council voted to place an item on the June 12th agenda to appoint an interim Town Administrator in light of the recent resignation of the Town Administrator Brett Poole. Approval to appoint interim Town Administrator for the Town of Lexington to such time as a permanent Town Administrator can be appointed. And do I need, do you all want me to name who?
I believe we're going into executive after this to discuss that.
So, I would like for us to appoint Stuart Ford as our interim Town Administrator. So I would like for us to appoint Stuart Ford as our interim town administrator and telling you when can be appointed.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carron seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is the executive search firm. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During town council's June 6, 2023 special work session, council voted to place an item on their June 12, 2023 agenda to employ an executive search firm to assist with the candidate curation and recruitment of a qualified applicant to fill the position of town administrator for the town of Lexington. So I make a motion for approval to hire an executive search firm for the recruitment process of the town's position for town administrator.
Very good. Mr. Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just want to point out, we'll read it into the record, that we're going to identify contingency funds as a source of the funding for that specific item.
Very good. Got that. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Stuart. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll hear announcements from Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Apologies.
No problem. Take your time.
All right. So we hope everybody's been enjoying the market at Ice House. The market will be held each Saturday again from 9:00 in the morning until 1:00 through the end of September, with the exception of July 1st. For a full list of events, go to icehouseamphitheater.com. The Board of Appearance will meet tomorrow night at 5:30 here in the council chambers. Planning Commission will not be meeting in June. Town Hall will be closed Monday, June 19, in observance of Emancipation Day, also called Juneteenth. The town will celebrate Independence Day a little early on Friday night, June 30. The 246th Army Band returns to play a concert at the Ice House Amphitheater starting at 7:00 PM, followed by a fireworks show. You can tune into 93.1 FM The Lake to listen to the patriotic music during the fireworks show. Admission is free and no ticket is required. There are great views from all the parking lots downtown at the Ice House and all the area restaurants, Lexington Square Park, or the Lexington Veterans Monument. The Church Street parking lots will be closed to prepare the fireworks and Church Street will be closed from Hendricks to Elm Street. We encourage you to view the town's video parking in the town of Lexington on the town's website, YouTube channel, or the town's Facebook page. It will direct you to over 900 parking spaces and public parking lots close to the amphitheater and allow you to park and watch the fireworks. We encourage everyone to have a fun and safe Independence Day on 4th of July. Town Hall will be closed on Tuesday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day. Town Council will meet again on July 10 as part of our summer schedule. We hope everyone has a great summer. Thank you for tuning in tonight for the Lexington Town Council meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add as far as announcements?
Gavin Smith sent me a text while I'm here. He's watching on YouTube, I guess, and said that the reason he's not at his meeting is because he had planned a family vacation. I'm not going to read his long text because he sent me a long one. But he planned a family vacation before he ran for council and won, so that is the reason he is missing tonight. But should be back tomorrow. And if anybody has any concerns or anything they'd like to discuss with him, please reach out.
Very good. Anyone else have any announcements or anything they'd like to add? Very good. Thank you for being with us. Any questions from the news media about tonight's agenda? Very good. Public comments. Are there any questions from, or I'm sorry, any comments from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone like to say anything about tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, let's see if my voice holds out. I am Patricia Ann Tandini. I live at 107 Park Meadow Drive in Lexington since 2004. I just, this has to do with the budget and it's something that I've, you know, discussed with other citizens and residents and we just don't understand it. So I have a presentation. I'm also going to submit my information plus a couple documents for the record. Okay. On my Dominion Electric Energy electric bill, there has been a franchise fee of 5% that's paid to the town of Lexington. In April, I paid $4.45 to the town of Lexington through my electric bill. I needed to know what a franchise fee was when it was part of an electric bill. I understand a franchise fee, if such as a McDonald's, you pay for the golden arches and you make a profit on selling their goods. So I resorted to a legal dictionary. It's called thelawdictionary.org. It's online. It said that a franchise fee is an upfront fee paid to use a brand name or privately held method of providing certain goods or services. Well, that sounded kind of like a monopoly to me. So I went to another legal dictionary and this one comes from Cornell University. It says, definition of monopoly is a type of commercial advantage enjoyed by one business entity that lets it determine, to determine to a significant extent the terms on which products or services may be obtained in a given region. For example, a monopoly would exist if a single supplier of gasoline in a state could significantly hike prices without serious competition. Then it said, see the antitrust laws. I'm going to leave that up to you. I'm sure you can explain it. Dominion Energy is the only option I have for electricity. This is a monopoly for the citizens of Lexington. You're elected to protect and defend this town and its citizens. How do you defend a 5% fee paid to you by Dominion Energy when we're forced to use their goods and services? I'd like to know how this fits into the town budget and what this extra 5% on my electric bill is paying for with the town. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We'd be glad to get some, a staff member with you after the meeting, answer your questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other comments regarding tonight's agenda? Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, June 12, 2023. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel 1301 several times during this week and the video will be available on the town's website at lexsc.com. Without objection, we are adjourned. Mr. Mayor.
We reconvene back into executive session.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carnes makes a motion to go back into executive session.
Second.
Mr. Lyle, seconds that motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are in executive.